Welcome to the journalists who have joined us here this morning. Your coverage is very important to getting the word out to our community about what we're doing here, and thank you to everyone who was watching on the County Direct Broadcast Network and also on Facebook Live. And thank you all for practicing safe social distancing. We're going to do everything we can to do the same, to the best of our ability. It may cause some delay between speakers as we clean off the podium, but it's important that we do this during this time. We have 14 elected officials and county subject matter experts available to you to answer your questions. Among them, they are Board of Supervisors Chairman Kurt Hagman, Board of Supervisors Vice Chair Josie Gonzalez, Second District Supervisor Janice Rutherford, Third District Supervisor Don Rao, Sheriff John McMahon is here, District Attorney Jason Anderson, County Superintendent of Schools Ted Alejandre, County Chief Executive Officer Gary McBride, County Public Health Director Trudy Ramundo, Dr. Webster Wong, MD, Chief of Medical Staff at ARMC, Dr. Rodney Borger, Chair of Emergency Medicine at ARMC, County Fire Chief Dan Muncy, County Emergency Services Manager Daniel Munoz, and Dr. Veronica Kelly, who is the Director of the County's Department of Behavioral Health. First, before we get to your questions, we'll have a few brief remarks from some of our officials and our experts. First person I would like to introduce is Board of Supervisors Chairman Kurt Hagman.
Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here and to serve on the Board of Supervisors my colleagues in San Bernardino County, is like every other county and jurisdiction in the country or the world right now that's facing our coronavirus emergency right now. We have one of the best counties to deal with this anywhere. I'm very proud to serve with these professionals all around me. San Bernardino County is the largest geographical county in the United States, has over 2 million population, or bigger than some states in population size in the United States, so we're going to have our issues here. But we're not without experience of our emergencies, between earthquakes and fires and even terrorist attacks. Our county personnel working with our 24 different cities have responded to each and every emergency with professionalism and great determination against things solved. So I have complete confidence in our team that we're doing all that together. So far, San Bernardino County has reported out as 38 positive COVID virus cases so far and our first death as of last night. These numbers will continue to increase, we know that. There's more is testing going on. We have over 460 tests so far, and that is accelerating, and we'll hear more about that from other speakers of how our testings go out through the community, but we expect those numbers to go up quite a bit. We also have been taking proactive measures when this all started. We've ordered additional equipment for our hospitals, and like everybody else, we're waiting for supplies, materials to come in to make sure that we can do things like prioritize our first responders, our nurses, and high-risk population in the future to get those things in and out, so we keep our frontline responders out on the streets helping our residents. We have set up the Joint Information Hotline so far, you see that on the dials here, with over, taken over 3,300 calls so far to date, and we have an excellent set of team up there trying to answer as many questions as we can for the county. We will be announcing, I think today, plans for bringing our first drive-through testing and community testing going forward, with a lot of the criteria, not everyone's going to get a test right away, as for those who really need it, but we'll let our public health officers speak about that. As you heard, we also be opening up a public dashboard, so we try to get more information to you as it comes in. We want the public to be fully transparent with us of what we're doing within our county. We'll hear more about that later, too. We're not sharing locations, which is one of my biggest complaints so far of our positive tests. First of all, just realize, there's a lot of it out there, we're going to find a lot more numbers coming around, it's going to hit every one of our cities and incorporate area throughout the county. So we all need to continue to take our precautions, practicing safe distancing, washing, all the things you've seen on TV for the last three, you know, two months. We need to take this seriously as a community, as residents, to do their part, to stay at home when they can, and practice the social distancing, making sure they're washing, making sure we don't, you know, contaminate and spread this virus any more than we already have. There's no shortage of food, we see a lot of runs in our supermarkets, we personally have contacted our supply chains for the county. We're in the warehouse capital of the West Coast here, we have plenty of supplies, it's just our demand has peaked farther than our supply chains, they're catching up, we have the things in our warehouses, we have food, we have toilet paper, all the rest of it, so we don't want to make sure our public does not panic and start hoarding even more and more despite what you need for your family for a while, just like you normally would each time. The Board has taken many actions to try to do our part to help our community, we know a lot of businesses and families are hurting, many different ways, financially, losing their livelihood, maybe losing their job. We're working with our locals, our state and our federal contacts to bring all the resources we can bear to our residents, and we're doing the things that we could take actions here on the county as well, to help ease this time during this crisis. We have frozen foreclosures in the county until April 30th, we addressed before then. We have adopted a resolution to assure residents that lose their utilities, we don't want people homeless or not getting their information, or not getting their lights are turned on because of this crisis, we're going to try to keep them in home, safe, and segregated. We have extended our county permits on dates for expiration for businesses, basically anything we can do in our control, we want to be there for our business and our residents throughout San Bernardino County. We are working with our biggest healthcare network here, IHP, it's called the Inland Empire Health Plan for our nurse access line, with our county, our sister county here in Riverside, that should be operational pretty soon, so people have health questions will have a number to call, as well as the JIC that we have below, the Joint Information Center phone number before. I have to say, I'm super proud of our first responders, you'll hear from many of the leadership of that today, they're doing a fantastic job, from police and fire, from our, we have 24 cities here of their agencies, as well of our county teams, our public health, our doctors and nurses on the front line, they don't shy away, they're taking the thing head on, and they're doing what they need to do as professionals that they are, to make sure that our residents are hit as little as possible. We're also working with our, we have our employee unions of the county, there's a lot of figuring out who goes where, they have all rose to challenge as well, as we needed people to move from one area of activity in the county to the other, they have taken that, and we're working with them to make sure that, you know, our lines of communication, all the county services are still open, and I think it's a point in part, there, our county services are still need to be happening. We may be shutting off some of the access, like public access to some of our buildings, but those services still remain intact, and a lot of the stuff we're transitioning to is online, on a phone call, if we need to set up a meeting, we will, but we're trying to do that for the safety of our residents, as well as our staff here in the county, but everything is open, we're still trying to do all the regular things that we normally do in the county. It's important that all the residents do their part, do your part, we're trying to do our part as governments to do what we can to make this crisis go as fast as we can, and to limit the effect to everybody, but do your part, too. Heed the orders from the state and the governor of staying at home and taking those safe health practices. We're going to be doing daily updates, and please continue to watch our San Bernardino County website for those updates, as well as, we started a COVID kindness social media campaign, have you seen that a little bit? There's a lot of great things going on by our residents, neighbors taking care of neighbors, businesses taking care of our residents by opening up special hours for certain elderly or our first responders, we have restaurants passing out food, this is a great time where the strength of San Bernardino County, and we have a local here in San Bernardino County that we coined after our December 2nd incident, S.B. Strong, that is our residents, they are very strong, and they are very determined to continue on, and watch those acts of kindness because they're out there everywhere, and we want to make sure that we highlight those, too. And so, we want to thank you very much, I know we have a lot of speakers today, and I believe our sheriff is coming up next, John McMahon.
I know we're in challenging and unprecedented times, but want to make sure that everybody knows, public safety remains our number one priority. We've made a couple of procedural changes to try to keep our deputy sheriffs as safe as possible, and as you all are aware, we had to report on Monday that one of our deputies tested positive for the virus. Happy to report that I spoke to him a couple of times, and he is at home recovering and has no more symptoms. Because of the reduced courtroom occupancy at our courthouses, that freed up some of our deputy sheriffs that are assigned to the Court Services Division to be out in the community and patrol those retail establishments, to help make them as safe as possible. We've changed some of the procedures at our jail facilities, our dedicated nursing staff is doing everything they can to make sure that they test everybody coming in the back door of the jail, to ensure they don't have any symptoms of the virus. If there are any symptoms that they notice, we have isolation protocols in place, and/or they can be diverted to other facilities should their medical needs be significant. The number of bookings that we've seen coming into our jails over the last couple of days has reduced. Now that reduction could be as a result of folks on the street not being involved in as many crime, that's what I would hope for, however, could also be because the deputy sheriffs and police officers that are dedicated to protecting the folks in our county are busy doing other things. We'll continue to do everything that we possibly can to keep the residents of our county safe, and continue to modify our policies and procedures should we need to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I do want to, first of all, start with a big thank you to all of our staff in public health. I need our community to know that at our core and at our mission is to protect our 2 million residents, and we are doing everything we can to do that. With that being said, as the chairhead indicated, we are currently standing at 38 confirmed cases and one death. I have to say that that death came far too soon, knowing that we only had our first confirmed case just over a week ago, and so, for all of public health, we send our hearts go out to that family. There are a couple of things I do want to cover that I think are probably at the forefront of everybody's mind, as the chairhead indicated, testing is one of our biggest priorities right now. We know that we do not understand the extent or the magnitude of this disease right now in our county, simply because our testing capacity has been limited. I think all of you have heard that we've probably done a little over 400 tests countywide. We have seen a 20,000% increase in tests since we announced our first case, and so that may be why our initial numbers may be low, but we are doing everything we can to bring those numbers up. And so my first announcement is that we are going to be doing a drive-through testing event this Friday, and so I ask everybody, we will have all of the details on our website starting at 8:00 AM tomorrow. I encourage everybody to go to our coronavirus website, it will provide you the details of the when and where, and it will also provide you a form, so that you can fill it out to request an appointment. The event itself will be by appointment only, because again, we only have about 400 tests. It will provide you the criteria that we will be looking for, and it will give you an opportunity to be able to certify that you meet those criteria. Please keep in mind that right now, this is our first test, it is our pilot, please be patient with us as we go through this event, what we want to be able to do is actually be able to learn from it, refine these events, and then scale it out countywide. We understand the unique diversity of this county, and so having it only in one place isn't going to make sense, but we do want to use this as a pilot, and then be able to scale it out to all of the other areas of our county, be it the High Desert, the Morongo Basin, the West End, the mountains, and things like that. But again, please be patient with us, our intent is to ultimately roll this out countywide. A couple of other things that the chair touched on, we are standing up a dashboard right now that will also go live tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. That dashboard is really our ability to be able to get more information out to the public, and information that I think is really important for you. It will have the number of confirmed cases that we have, it will have the number of tests that are being done, and you can see that incremental increase and the exponential increase of the number of tests that have occurred just in the last week. We have been providing age and gender throughout our press releases, and so you will be able to see a breakdown for all of our confirmed cases, by age grouping and by gender as well. And then the last announcement that I want to make is that, after my presentation at the board yesterday, I know we had a lot of questions about short-term rentals, and so, after today, we will be amending our local order to add clarity about short-term rentals, and I cannot emphasize this enough, the governor's executive order and the state public health officer's order indicates that you stay home, and so, to be clear, you stay home in your home, it is not you stay home in somebody else's home, and I don't say that lightly. In order for us to truly be able to put real prevention strategies in place, we need to flatten this curve, and I know that's a term that's often used, but one of the best ways to do that is through social distancing. So again, if you can, stay home, I cannot emphasize that enough, stay home, practice social distancing, wash your hands, continue to practice good hygiene, all of those things that we have been trying to emphasize, those are the, those are the things that will allow us to flatten this curve, and then ultimately, hopefully, try to get back to some sense of normalcy in the next couple of months. But again, we don't need to see spikes, we want to emphasize that we are really looking to you, as much as my staff can do, we need your help, we need the public's help in order to be able to address this particular issue. So with that, I want to thank you.
And just for your information, that was Trudy Ramondo, our Director of Public Health.
My name is Webster Wong, I'm Chief of the Medical Staff at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, San Bernardino County Hospital. At ARMC, ARMC is proactively preparing for the unexpected, working with our county partners and with local, national, and international sources to provide the best care for everyone. As the coronavirus pandemic grows, ARMC is committed to the task of screening, testing, and educating our patients, protecting our healthcare workforce to see patients, and bringing in the needed equipment and expertise to respond to any surge of sick patients. Please keep informed by getting regular updates through the County of San Bernardino website and your news outlets. Medical advice to prevent the spread of virus? Wash your hands, you've heard this many times before, I'll reiterate it again, wash your hands. At least 20 seconds with soap and preferably warm water, or use hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. Number two, use social distancing of at least six feet. The virus is easily spread with close contact, it can survive in the air or on surfaces for long periods of time. Number three, do not touch your face with your hands. People touch their face at least 20 times per hour, believe it or not. Please stay away from touching your eyes, nose, and mouth, especially with unclean hands. And finally, cough and sneeze into a tissue or into your elbow. Remember, if you do sneeze into a tissue or cough into a tissue, put it into a closed receptacle right afterwards. Also, with screening, if you have cough, fever, or been in contact with a coronavirus-positive person, but do not have breathing problems, stay at home in isolation. Rest, stay hydrated, control your fever with medications. If you have these symptoms and have chronic medical conditions such as diabetes, heart failure, COPD, or unstable asthma, or are immunocompromised, please call ARMC or the San Bernardino Public Health Department to be screened. And finally, if you have cough, fever, or been in contact with a coronavirus-positive person and have breathing difficulties, please come to the emergency room at ARMC or your local regional ERs. Now collectively, we're protecting our healthcare providers in order for us to be there for you. Unfortunately, masks, gowns, gloves, cleaning items, and laboratory testing are in limited supply at this time. We are actively pursuing reinforcements and redeploying our existing medical staff. Collaborations with private companies, regional health systems, school districts, and our county partners in probation, jails, behavioral medicine, et cetera, are there. We have support from a large network of physicians and hospitals nationwide and even globally. Everybody knows, it's all hands on deck. To talk about our search plan, Dr. Rodney Borger, Chair of the Department of Emergency Medicine is here. Thank you very much.
Here have been a couple of references to our coronavirus website, the address for that is on the floor of the podium, a little, for some people to chew on, you can go to the county's homepage, www.sbcounty.gov, and they're now featuring their, say, little picture of the virus, and it will take you directly to that page, a lot of information I can give.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Rodney Borger, I'm the Chairman of Emergency Medicine at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. As an emergency physician in the emergency medicine community, we prepare, we prepare not only for heart attacks and strokes, but we also prepare for disasters. We prepare regularly for fire and earthquake, but we also prepare for global pandemics. So I want to reassure the public that we have a strong plan, and together, we will get through this. This is something that we are all working together in an unprecedented fashion to tackle. I would like to thank the county partners for their incredible effort in working together for public health, for behavioral health, for ISMA, which is our Inland County's Emergency Medicine Group, for the politicians and elected officials who have made things much easier by helping us cut through red tape and opening their resources to the medical community in unprecedented fashions. I'd also like to thank the frontline staff, the nurses and physicians who are coming to work every day, not skipping work, because they understand that they need to be there to serve the community, to a person that they have showed up, even though there is a great deal of uncertainty for them. With the help of the hospital and county administration, we are preparing to rapidly increase our hospital capacity with a goal of 30 to 50% increase in hospital beds. We've set up portable tents and trailers outside of the hospital in order to test and treat those who are at high risk outside the hospital, to keep them from having to enter in the hospital where they might expose staff and at-risk ill patients. We've converted a hospital unit to a high-level viral containment unit for the highest-risk COVID patients requiring high-risk aerosolized procedures. We've set up a multidisciplinary physician-led COVID consulting service to make sure that the hospital has access to the latest information on how to deal with COVID patients. We're preparing to convert a local surgery center to accept medical surgical patients to increase the hospital capacity. We've expanded our ventilator capacity by 50, by identifying places in the hospital where we could run ventilators and staff them and have them appropriately taken care of in a safe manner. We're conserving supplies that are in short supply, and we set up a procurement system with the county to try to stay ahead of these shortages. So far, we're doing okay, although there are many identified things that are in short supply. We're rapidly preparing to increase our testing capacity within the medical center. By early April, we should have the ability to do high-volume same-day COVID testing within the hospital. There are many, many other initiatives going on to deal with specific populations, including mental health patients and homeless. It's been said multiple times, it's better to prepare and not need than to not prepare and not have. As Americans, we always come together, and it's great to see the people of this county coming together in a strong fashion, and to really be San Bernardino County strong. Thank you very much.
Used to go into press conferences in late March to talk about the fire season, the early fire season, and here we are talking about COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. The coronavirus is a lot like a fire to your fire department. To get through major wildfires, we use good command and control, we ensure that our personnel are well-trained, and that we have proper personal protective equipment, and that we're working well with other agencies. Like to talk about the current fire department status, we are at our full response force at this time. We've seen a decrease in calls, like our law enforcement brothers, how
We've seen a decrease in calls, like our law enforcement brothers. However, we've seen an increase of calls for six persons. As an individual calls 911, the first thing is they're going to find is that our dispatch center is asking some calls immediately to try to screen out the coronavirus patients that our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs may encounter. This delays a little bit the response of our fire force, but this is very, very important. Unlike a hospital situation where a COVID-19 patient might be known to all the staff, our firefighters are constantly walking into environments where they may be an undiagnosed COVID-19 patient or they may be in an environment that a COVID patient had existed just hours before. Our personnel are working hard at keeping the public safe by wearing personal protective equipment on all calls that are untraditional. As our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs are responding, the first thing the public will notice is that they have gloves on, they have a gown, they will be wearing a mask or a respirator and goggles. Don't assume that this means that your neighbor or you have COVID. What this means is that we're keeping our personnel safe. If our personnel are exposed to COVID-19, then they become carriers, and every emergency call that they go on from then on out, they're exposing other individuals. We're making sure that all our personnel are medically monitored several times a day. We're ensuring that all our sick personnel, and to date, we've had no exposures to COVID, are kept at home to make sure that they recover and they're not spreading any type of influenza and if they did have COVID, that we're not spreading that to others. We anticipated COVID months ago. As the first cases in the United States started appearing, our departments started ordering personal protective equipment to ensure that our responders would have the gear that they needed, anticipating an increased workload. Despite this, as you've heard from others, equipment is in short supply, and we're committing innovative methods in using non-traditional personal protective equipment to ensure that our firefighters continue to have the best and safest personal protective equipment possible. Quick operational update. I'm very proud of the 18 different fire agencies in San Bernardino County of our law enforcement partners, specifically the Sheriff's Department and our LMSA, our local EMSA agency, ISMA, for coming together and forming an inter-agency team. The inter-agency team is working together to share the resources, the scant personal protective gear between the different agencies, to track this equipment, to do ordering in bulk where we can, and to make sure that all our responders are protected. They're developing inter-agency protocols that you might see a Loma Linda firefighter on a San Bernardino County fire engine if our workforce was compromised or vice versa. You might see a Redlands fire engine in Ontario helping them, but we're making sure that we're doing everything we can together to streamline our operations. In doing so, it also creates some cost efficiencies. Fighting COVID is very taxing on our fire department's budget, not only with the logistics, but with the amount of planning and preparation that's involved. Truly, our agency is better when we work with our law enforcement partners and with our area fire departments and with ISMA. And we're also better when the public's helping us. So I'm going to ask the public to do a couple of things. One is, as you call 911, please identify if you might have COVID-19 or you've been exposed to someone that may be diagnosed with COVID-19 or has been diagnosed. We're going to ask you, if possible, to take the patient outside of the building. COVID-19 is spread through droplets in the air, and in enclosed spaces, those droplets can remain for hours. We want to make sure that our personnel aren't at risk. Thank you very much for cooperation between the different agencies and with the public. I'm Dan Muncy, your San Bernardino County Fire Chief.
Good morning. Daniel Munoz. I'm the Emergency Services Manager for the County of San Bernardino. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a briefing. I'm going to start off by focusing on the emergency operation efforts. The county's EOC has been activated for a couple of weeks now. We've been running operations from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. A lot of folks are not familiar with the role of an EOC. Typically, we play a critical behind-the-scenes support, coordination, and logistical and informational role. I want to make sure that the public understands that basically our role is to provide an overarching, common operating picture for all of the agencies that are involved in this effort. So when we talk about all of the agencies that are involved in this effort, that's a lot of people, a lot of organizations. It includes our law, our fire, our EMS, our healthcare systems, our school systems, our special districts. So I just want to reassure the public that the county OES team is working full-time around the clock to ensure that all of these efforts are coordinated. We do this in conjunction with both state and federal partners. We do it with county organizations, and more importantly, we also do it with our cities and towns and our school districts. Just for your informational purposes, currently, the county departments that are activated, their department operation centers include the Sheriff's Department, probation department, ISMA, public health, behavioral health, health and human services. So that just goes to show you the breadth and scope of the number of people and teams that are actively involved, working together with our EOC to share information, to coordinate on logistical issues, amplify messages, and so forth. And I just want to reassure the public that for the County of San Bernardino, emergency management is a team sport. We don't go at this alone. We do this in partnership with all of our friends and partners from the state level all the way on down and, you know, helping to amplify the message that we hear, that we heard here today from our friends at public health, ARMC, our fire chief, and our sheriff. My, my personal challenge to the residents of San Bernardino County is that anybody can be a member of the emergency management team. And if you want to be a part of the emergency management team in San Bernardino County, the challenge is simple. Just heed the advice of our local health department and make sure that you do everything that you can to the greatest extent possible to practice non-pharmaceutical interventions, which includes washing your hands, social distancing, telecommuting, anything that you can do to separate from large groups. So with that, thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Good morning. I'm Ted Alejandra, San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. And I want to thank Chairman Hagman and the Board of Supervisors and all of our county agencies and partners for their continued support for all of the schools that we have in San Bernardino County. As mentioned, these are unprecedented times, and we're doing our best to support the educational needs of all of our students. In our county, we have 33 school districts, about 406,000 students. And last week, we made the difficult decision to close our schools until May 1st. During this time, we will be following the guidance that's embedded within the Governor's Executive Order, which includes a key component of distance learning for all of our students. You know, it's inspiring to see the efforts of our superintendents, administrators, and especially our teachers and classified staff across our county that are really working together to reach out to students and families to provide distance learning opportunities in all the subject areas, and we continue to support their efforts. We also have a strong emphasis on nutrition for all students in our county. We know the importance of lunch, regular lunch meals and breakfast meals, and all of our districts are establishing grab-and-go points at their individual locations based on community needs to ensure that all of our students and families have access for student meals throughout the period of these closures. County schools, we continue to use all of the expertise and resources that we have to support our school districts. We established our Distance Learning Collaborative, which includes expertise from the technology side, but also from the curriculum side, to work with experts in county schools as well as a number of experts throughout our school districts to really leverage best practices so that we can engage students in quality learning opportunities. It's exciting to see this take place because everybody truly understands the importance of continued learning for all the students we have in all of our schools. We continue to work with our State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman. He's been great at continuing to provide resources and information to all of the county offices of education across the state so we can continue to inform our districts of the most current needs and requirements and resources that are available to support districts in our county. I especially want to thank members of our Emergency Operations Center, our EOC at county schools. They're working tirelessly to gather and disseminate information and resources to all of our communities and support the educational needs that our school districts have, and also working with the county EOC. All of our information is located on our county school's website, so we encourage stakeholders and districts and communities and parents and others to go onto our website, which is filled with resources to support the needs of your students. And finally, I just want to thank the 19,000-plus teachers in our county, thousands more, paraprofessionals, administrators, the commitment of our school board members, working as a team, as mentioned earlier, so that we can really collaborate with each other to reach out to our students and families and continue this educational support while our schools are closed. Thank you very much for today. Appreciate it.
If I can introduce Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jesse Gonzalez, who will deliver some remarks in Spanish.
Muy buenos dias, Presidentes del Condado de San Bernardino. El Condado de San Bernardino continúa trabajando diligentemente para prevenir la propagación del coronavirus. Hoy necesitamos su ayuda. Por favor, continúe cumpliendo con la orden de queda que nos ordena a todos. Permanecernos en nuestro hogar. Mantengan la distancia de persona a persona. Solo salga de su casa por artículos más necesarios. El Departamento de Salud Pública del Condado de San Bernardino está aumentando las pruebas. Estamos trabajando las 24 horas del día para adquirir más equipos de prueba, y pronto tendremos pruebas comunitarias disponibles. Ayer el condado adoptó una resolución que suspende los desalojos de propiedades residenciales y comerciales si los inquilinos no pueden pagar debido a falta de fondos por la pandemia del coronavirus. Para obtener más información, visite el sitio web del Condado de San Bernardino O llame a la línea de información lunes a viernes de 9:00 de la mañana por 5:00 de la tarde al número 909-387-3911. El personal estará listo para asistirles en español. Se les da las gracias por su cooperación. Manténganse seguros y sanos. Que Dios los bendiga a todos. Y por favor, si tienen preguntas, tienen preocupaciones, por favor llamen al número indicado. Una vez más, al 909-387-3911. Muchas gracias y que Dios los bendiga.
Thank you. That's all prepared speakers to this point. We'd like to open up to any kind of questions that the media may have for us. And hopefully, if I can answer, we have plenty. We have our entire county leadership team here to address different questions. Yes, sir.
Perhaps I missed it, but were you going to make an announcement on the location of this drive-through testing and when it started, how that's going to work?
It's going to be, a pilot program is going to be open by Friday. That's our target goal right now. We're going to get the logistics set up. And you heard this on every jurisdiction out there. It's all about how many supplies we get in, how many we turn around, and getting it out quicker. So we'll be starting that program by the end of the week. We're going to be probably inviting certain, certain types of our personnel throughout the county, those with high risk, you know, targeted population, to bring them out first. And then as we're able to ramp up those tests, we'll, we'll get more and more of the community involved. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
I had another question about county employees. And how is the process determined, you know, which are essential and which aren't to hopefully limit potential exposure? For example, if all the libraries are closed, but you still are having people come to work and go in there to, you know, I don't want to say do busy work, but you know, the more people that are there doing stuff, maybe interacting, they could be worried they're going to bring it back home to where the rest of their family is.
Absolutely. And what we are doing is a internal process, obviously, those public-facing buildings that are deemed non-critical. We're, first of all, we're trying to telecommute just like everybody else is. Anybody could do their job at home. We're sitting at home with a laptop, a computer, answering phone calls at home, doing those type of things. Secondly, is we're reassigning the county personnel, working through our labor representatives and others from non-critical positions to critical positions as needed. We're trying to be very flexible in the county. This is a wide-scale event that we're working with our individual county family members as well, who can report to work what kind of cross-section skills they have. And that's a process done by department to department. And we're in that, we're in those phases right now of working out those logistics. Our goal is to provide the needed services to our residents. We are here for them. At the same time, protect our county families best we can by remote, do as much as we can remote. You should see our board meetings in our offices. We're all spread apart, even our JIC center, there, at least our social distancing. But as those new needs come up for certain criteria areas, you know, testing stations, thermometers, you know, the strict phone calls, we're transferring people, training them to come over, those that can. But we're at that same concern that every business does in the county, that we want to limit our exposure to our staff and try to be as efficient as we can from remote locations.
Just a quick question. What kind of protection those people, low-income people have that rent apartments?
I'm sorry, that...
People that rent apartments?
Those, we put those protections for, you know, for the next, you know, 30-plus days to make sure they, they have their utilities, make sure they can't be evicted, those type of protections. We ordered that yesterday, the board did. And so, and we'll be adjusting those timelines as this event unfolds. Everything's very fluid every day, and we're trying to take both proactive steps the best we can to protect our residents throughout the county as well as react to anything new that comes in. Sir?
I had another question as far as compliance when it comes to social distancing businesses and, you know, the difference of, you know, what's the order and then what's the spirit of the order. I've been talking to other agencies throughout the area that are starting to come up with, you know, a response to how do they handle large groups of people that are, you know, wanting the order, so to speak? And a lot of these agencies don't really know, is that a COVID enforcement issue? Is that a, here, would it be a Sheriff's Department issue? What's the message to the public if they see that happening? What's the message to the people who are ignoring some of these?
Yeah, we do get a lot of those calls at the Joint Information Hotline right now. We are trying to record them and respond to ones that are repeat offenders, so to speak. It's really about peer pressure on our residents right now. Do the right thing. This is to protect you. This is to protect you from catching the virus, from you spreading that virus to the other family members that you love, your neighbors.
family members that you love, your neighbors, your coworkers, by doing the right thing. We have additional steps that we can take if need be. If we see a business that's not binding by, you know, a bar or restaurant, we can send someone over there, talk to them. We're trying to get compliance that way first, although they are teeth in the order if we need to use it. But right now, we're seeing most of our residents and most of our community doing a very good job at it. If you look at our freeways and our streets, you know, there's always been traffic on there. We have a lot of critical infrastructure that supports the rest of Southern California located in our county for distributing those supplies, so there's a lot of people doing their critical work on the private sector as well as the public sector. But yes, we will, we will respond as needed to those who do not heed the warning. And I think it's taken a while for society to adopt these new rules of, of way we socialize with each other. It does take a while, but I see improvement every day by residents. I see those acts of COVID kindness come out every day. I saw one of my neighbors had a truck open with several reams of toilet paper, say, "Take what you need," and just left it out there in front. These are the kind of acts that we see, but we expect people to do their part, to be part of the solution, this crisis.
Is that not a 911 thing? That's a...
It's not a 911 thing. They can't call in the joint information hotline here, and we can respond there too. David?
The audience can't hear the questions.
Oh, okay. I guess I have to repeat the question. Some people can't hear the questions, so, next one.
Well, I had another one.
Sure.
So, a couple of calls that we got today about the homeless in Big Bear that were in hotels or motels and they're being kicked out. There's not a place for them to go to the bathroom. Have any of these reports trickled in yet? I don't know if there's someone who can respond to that. But we did receive two calls this morning, two separate.
Okay. The question was, what are we doing about, I'll generalize it as for the homeless population, and those guidelines from the state are helping us with resources right now, and our Mercy Operations Center have plans to hopefully socially isolate our homeless and give them shelter, and we need to make sure that they don't become a spreader for the rest of the public as well. As we get those reports individually throughout the county, it's being forwarded to our Mercy Operations Center, and they have a task team working on those, those different instances as it comes in. If no other questions, I would say we have a great team here. The county is here for our residents in San Bernardino County with our cooperation with 24 different cities and multiple other agencies throughout the county. We are working closely with our neighboring counties as well as the state and the federal government. Our legislative representatives have been in contact with us daily, both at the state and the federal level, seeing what they can do to help. This is a group team effort by your governance, and everyone's stepping up to the challenge right now on all different levels. At the same time, our public's doing a great job, but make sure you do your part at home. Make sure you heed all the things you hear on TV and everything we're telling you today. Do your part, be part of the solution. And I think that's, that's it.
We have a couple of questions from reporters who are practicing the ultimate in social distancing or watching this online, and some of the other questions. The first question I received, the reporter, there are actually a couple of questions for our sheriff. First, I need to from Jason Miller, the Highland Community, is how will Sheriff Tom McManaman avoid you enforcing Governor Gavin Newsom's stay-at-home order? And the second question from the same reporter, Governor Gavin Newsom announced through an executive order on Tuesday, March 5th, he will arrest the state and county jails instead of being transferred to state prison due to the coronavirus. How will Sheriff Tom McManaman increase the number of inmates in county jails through the new administration?
As to the first question about the enforcement of the order, we have a good process in place working with public health, and you heard the chairman already speak about the phone line that you can call to report that. Our ultimate goal is for folks to just comply, but there is enforcement mechanisms if need be, but we haven't seen that. Most everybody in our county is complying, and they're doing their very best to social distance and to stay at home. The second question is that the governor announced that we are no longer going to be able to, at least for a period of 30 to 60 days, send inmates that are sentenced to state prison from our facilities to the state prison system. What we've seen thus far is our overall average population in our jails has dropped by 700 just in the last two weeks. Average daily population was about 6,200, now it's 5,500. I already indicated that the number of bookings has decreased over the last couple of weeks as well. The number of inmates that we'll keep in our facility that are sentenced to state prison is very low currently, and depending on how much the courts are able to do in the next number of weeks, it may or may not impact our overall population. Currently, we have plenty of capacity to absorb that increase. We'll just see how that goes over the next couple of weeks.
Follow-up, why is the population dropping? Are people just being, are some people just being let out while they wait for their trials or what's, what's going on?
There's a number of reasons that the overall population inside of our jail has dropped over the last couple of weeks. Number one, the number of people being arrested and booked into our facilities has dropped about 17 to 18% over the last couple of weeks. And as I indicated before, it could be a number of reasons. Number one, that folks are staying home and they're not getting involved in criminal activity as much as they were before. Could be that officers in the field are busy doing other things. But it could also be because folks are being involved in misdemeanor cases, that they're being cited in the field and not being booked into our facilities. Could be a combination of that. I know our courts, along with the public defender and the DA in our county, are working closely together to do what they can to adjudicate those criminal cases in the courts so that those inmates, if applicable, can be released after their cases are adjudicated. They'll continue to do that as well.
You have a couple of questions in the follow-up area. I'm sure supervisor Chairman Hagman would like to take these, or if Director Lou would like to take these, so I'll go ahead and read them out.
Could you hold on a moment, please? She's spraying. I'm getting it in my face.
The first question is, would the county consider releasing general geographic location of positive cases such as High Desert, West End, or Mar-a-Lago Basin? Or how are the cases dispersed? Are they county-wide or only in certain parts of the county?
So, the request to have all of our positive cases identified by either city or region is a question that we've been getting quite a bit, and so to reiterate a couple of areas as to why we are not releasing city or probably not going to release it by region as well. Number one, for privacy reasons. We will never, ever jeopardize the privacy of the individuals that test positive for coronavirus. And there are several other things. As you've seen, we have actually picked up an additional 22 cases, I think, in over the last two days, or 21. With the number of cases that we've seen since the very beginning, it is obvious that we have coronavirus or COVID-19 in the entire county. And so what I ask is that rather than trying to divide this disease up by city, I need residents to assume that it is already in your city and that it is already in your community. With that being said then, what I need from folks is to be at the most heightened sense of awareness, to follow all of the orders coming out of the state, whether it's the governor or the state public health officer or any amended orders we do at the local level. It is going to be prevention that will help flatten this curve. It is not going to be a matter of trying to divide this up by city. And there are other things, reasons why we don't want to do that. We don't want that unintended consequence of possibly stigmatizing a particular community or even giving a community a false sense of protection or hope simply because they don't see their city listed on our website. We need all 2 million residents to be at the most heightened level of awareness, of prevention, and of preparedness, and so hence why we've not elected to provide the city, but we know that in all of our previous press releases, we have provided the age and we have provided the gender, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Trudy. One more question, well, another question I think there's one after that. Stacy Moore from the High District Star is asking, is it possible to explain about why the county has so few tests at this point?
Tests in terms of supplies? And quite honestly, it is not just the county of San Bernardino. It is a statewide issue and it is a national issue. Tests are, when we, when the commercial labs came on board, I think March 9th, I think there was an assumption that tests would be available just very easily. What we're seeing, and the last I heard, is that the commercial labs are now seeing almost 25,000 tests per day and maybe gearing up to have to accept 35,000 tests per day. And so hence why you probably see test results going through the commercial labs, taking anywhere from five to seven days for results coming back. We do have a public health lab where we have prioritized a lot of our testing to what I consider high-risk populations, so healthcare workers, those that are living in congregate settings, and we've worked out a really great process for both probation and our sheriff's department around correctional facilities, those that are over 65, those that have underlying health conditions. And the reason we prioritize that is because we do have the capacity to return test results much faster, and it is for those populations where the timing of results is incredibly critical. Knowing that a nurse can or cannot return back to an ED setting, knowing whether a correctional officer or inmate needs to be isolated, those are the things. Whether or not we need to rally resources around our most vulnerable, timing is of the essence in regards to that. Now, with that being said, we are working very closely with the California Department of Public Health. We had a call with them yesterday and have already given them our desire, all of the things that we need out of them in, in order to support us at the local level when it comes to testing. But supplies in general is not just a county thing, it's a statewide thing, it's a national thing. But if we're talking about the simple fact that we've only done about 460 orders, I think it is just because that we got our first positive much later than many of our surrounding neighbors. But as I said, ever since that first positive, our testing has gone up 20,000% in just those several days. And so hence why, whatever resources we can get, we are trying to do much more community level testing.
Thank you. One possibility more for you. I'm not sure about the second one. This one definitely for you. Will the dashboard include the number of people who have recovered?
It will, we are continuing to, so this area around recovered, oftentimes we won't necessarily get that number upfront. It is something that we can certainly look at as we start to work through some of those cases. I don't want folks to think that that's a number that's readily available because many of these cases will take weeks for us to continue the follow-through. So, but that is something that we will jot down and think about including as well.
Next question, this might be one for the doctors because it's a little, little complex. We'll see. This is from Fox 11 in LA. And North County doctors offering tests for people, a serology test where they poke your finger. The doctor says they don't need to wait for a EUA status as long as they post a disclaimer from this FCA. Hopefully, you know, these things will allow it out, let us see what you're saying. The test has not been reviewed by the FDA and so forth. Is this legal? Do you know about these tests? Will you tell us? Apparently, the president and the law department are going to talk about this. Is there, do you know any knowledge on this?
So yes, there are a lot of tests that have been brought in from South Korea, from China. Hasn't gone through the FDA. This particular test is a serology test. Unfortunately, there have been some issues with cross-reactivity. What that means is that there are several coronaviruses out there, not just this novel coronavirus or COVID-19. And so therefore, you might get some what we call positive, false positive tests where the test would be positive but actually falsely, which unfortunately clouds the issue of keeping people safe. And so that's why there's, there's, there's a lot of issues with regards to virology and with the, with the medical community, the medical community when it comes to using these, these tests. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last question that we have from, from our online journalists, and I will ask Supervisor Rao to address this. Where, where will people in short term will come from? Are they people trying to get away from LA or going to town?
Good morning. I think we have two different scenarios happening. This outbreak happens right in the middle of many people's spring breaks, and so we have families that already had trips planned out to our mountain areas and to our desert areas where we have a large population of short-term rentals that have been available. And then secondly, we do see an influx of people coming from areas where they can drive that haven't taken this ordering as seriously as they needed to. So whether that's from LA or just San Diego counties or just within the general driving area, I think we've seen it. I noticed that on my, in my communities, I see fewer and fewer out-of-state plates, so I believe that they are just those from the Southern California area that had been coming out until the governor clarified the order.
They gave me all mic now. Any other questions we have? If not, thank you. Thank you for getting the information out to our public. Thank you for covering. Thank you for this great, awesome team that we have, Seminole and San Bernardino County are our partners, and we'll keep getting information out to you as the time comes on. Thank you.